Item number one, Person of the Year Appointment. Discussion of the whole. I'm going to kick it off at this point. Vice Chair Mr. Russo and myself at the agenda meeting had a discussion in regards to Person of the Year, and we felt it was appropriate that since we have two people that we put both Becky Yonker and Jo Jean Thompson up as co- 2022 co persons of the year. So with that, the discussion from any board member.
I think it's a good idea.
I do too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, Ken. So I don't know which one of you commissioners, I think it was Dave that put up Becky, and I think it was Mark that put up Jo Jean. Would you guys like to get a bio for Becky? Okay, we need to, which one of you did it for Becky? You need to do a bio then and get a bio for her and then you need to contact both of them and have them here at the next meeting, please. I was just going to ask, do you want it at the work session or do you want it at the regular meeting?
Put them number one so if they got to get and do something else.
Whatever however you guys want to do it, so what's it will do. You want the work session nine o'clock on the 21st.
If you would like that in resolution format, Julie would need those bios within a week.
Right.
For her to have that accomplished.
And then we need to, and I know she's, I know she's probably already ahead of me, but she'll need to get two picture frames and the appropriate certificate put into them. Hey? All right, anything else on far as Person of the Year? Okay, item number two, 2023 Holiday Closure Schedule. I believe that is, the schedule itself is included in motion number two. So Michelle sat down from the clerk's office and put this all together for next year for you gentlemen and ladies. So Okay, so any questions in regards to holiday closure dates? Many commissioner? Okay? Item number three, Cherry Capital Communications, Tim Malone. Last time I seen you was in Port Huron. David and I have both seen you. Turn your mic on, you're right now, you're ready.
I'm a little out of practice. Thank you. And if I'm a little out of touch, I woke up this morning and for some reason I realized the meeting was today, I had it on the calendar for next week, but I did have my presentation material ready, I just was sending it off today. Anyway, so Roscommon County allocated 1.2 million in ARPA dollars to us and really kind of a leader within rural Michigan in allocating money towards broadband. And other counties are slowly but surely starting to get back into how important broadband is for the economic development of things. And we'll talk a little bit farther down on the status report about the Michigan High Speed Internet Office. And they've coined the phrase internet for all. And so their goal is a 95% connection to all homes at 100 by 100 symmetrical for Michigan. That's an extremely high bar to hit. Most, most of Charter is asymmetrical, most of DSL can never reach that level. Really, over time, there's going to be a rebuild of all the infrastructure in Michigan. And we believe to fiber, there are some other technologies that can do it, but we believe fiber is the end result. And for those who don't know, I'm Tim Mayloans, CEO for Cherry Capital Connection. Next slide, please. We've kind of put together a little timeline for you. Back in the third quarter of 2021, Roscommon County allocated money and to start construction in Nester Township with the idea that we're going to touch on seven of the townships in Roscommon over time and applied for an NTIA application that would provide fiber middle mile primarily through all the townships of Roscommon. And that made it to second level review and basically was rejected due to the number of households directly that would be served. It was a good plan, but it just missed on one very small piece of criteria. But it was a good lesson for us on how to, you know, in every grant and every application is different and unique. And, but I think we got a good structure to continue. We started construction in fourth quarter of 2021. We selected the MFL area, that club had 240 homes in it. It allowed us to make the greatest impact in some of the most rural area, and it gave us a longer construction season because it's private roads versus being limited by the county road commission. And that, we've completed MFL. And we're now heading down Maple Valley Road from Nester Township Hall. And we're just about to Greenwood and heading to the county border. We will turn around and this will be our first year, we're going to do all winter construction and we'll turn around and go off Maple Valley to West Branch, doing boring all the way up that route so that by spring, we have quite a large area for connecting customers to. Um, the next step for the county is really to take advantage of the BDC county challenge. BDC is a, I'll explain a little bit farther down, is the new method for keeping track of who has broadband and at what level. It replaces what was called the 477 form that providers put in. But under BDC, you can put in your own address and you can challenge whether or not you have internet or not. If it says you're served, you can challenge that and the feds will require providers like myself to respond. The county can also do a countywide effort of saying that's just not true, you know, and challenge it. So it's the first time the feds have given the constituents a say in every reporting cycle. Kind of put a little more burden on the providers, but you know, that's okay. The end result is having good data. And what Michigan's goal is, is they want to have counties challenge it because the 1.5 billion we've got from the feds already allocated, they want that to be closer to 2 billion of that money coming to Michigan under BEAT's program. So the challenge process and constituents doing it is a good thing for the county. Because we're going to go after BEAT money, we're going to go after Robin money to bring it back to Roscommon County. We're, by second quarter of 2023, we're going to meet our 20% goal for Ardo. It did require us to double our production schedule to reach the Ardo path. We were pretty happy with it. We, I actually have to triple our production and we doubled it this year and we're positioned to triple our production by the end of 2023. So just more people, more equipment. And the workforce is starting to come back. Construction will continue in Roscommon until fourth quarter of 2025 to 2026. And in that, we're going to connect, we estimated 1,100 homes. Pass somewhere around 3,000 homes. So that's just to kind of give you, all these projects are long-term projects that have different milestones throughout. And those milestones change as we go forward. So in 2022, we selected MFL and moved over to Nester. And then we'll go north into Bacchus and Richfield Township. And then in late 2023, 2024, we'll move into Detton, Roscommon Township, Lion Lake. So if we have an aggressive schedule, we'd like to be done, you know, no later than mid 2025 with that project. CCC has matched with 2.9 million to the 1.2 million the county has already put in. And we've today put in over 300,000 feet of fiber. The other thing we did do, entering into Nester and the population of Nester being so powerful for ACP, a lot of people are economically challenged in Nester Township. So for 2022, 2023, we're waiving the construction, the connection fee. So the $1,200 has been lowered to $500 for people to connect in Nester Township. Any questions on the route we did just? Quick.
Next slide, please.
So a couple of counties where we're building a fiber plant have asked if government money is being used under Robin or BEATs, why would we fund a monopoly? And why should the state fund the monopoly? And so we took that to heart and we analyzed what ended up being Sweden. There's a US company COS that built software for what's called a wholesale model. So we're going to hopefully by spring of 2023 have the software loaded so we can test so that by summer of 2023, everybody on CCC Fiber will have a choice of who provides their internet. We'll be, we'll maintain the fiber backbone, but they can pick and choose their provider, if that provider participates in the wholesale program. So in Sweden, they have four or five companies that own the main backbone fiber, but they have an average of 16 different companies that provide the internet side of things. That competition increases our adoption rate and generally lowers the cost to the consumer. So you'll see the wholesale model, there's a trying to make it less technical flow, but basically we have no idea who the customer is, we just know the endpoints and the provider has 100% control of that household in a common infrastructure, so you're only building the fiber once, but yet having competition. Roscommon, Roscommon and Benzie County will be the first two counties in Michigan that wholesale model available to the taxpayers. So we're real excited about that. So far, providers are calling us to participate and there's some national ones that want to participate, so we're really happy with that. Next slide, please. So broadband data collection took providing, reporting by census block or census tract served and not served and brought it all the way to the household. And if you look for FCC broadband map, it'll come up, you can put in your address and there is a database out there called Cost Quest that maps every house in the United States that we match to and see who, who are your providers. I did notice at Roscommon, there's quite a few homes that aren't served by 100 by 20. So that's good for Robin and BEATs for Roscommon. The site hung up this morning, so I couldn't get a map to you, that's the one last piece I was going to do. But there's great opportunity to bring money to Roscommon. I had sent off a public-private partnership document, but the last meeting with the Michigan High Speed Internet Office, they were reluctant or didn't look favorably on funding government-involved entities with BEATs or Robin. They wanted to be the private sector to take care of it. So we can still have a public-private partnership for how to raise money and how to educate and how to get things out to the consumers. But as part of the application, Roscommon will just be the area we're serving, not a, not a co-applicant with us. But it is, it's really a pretty good map. I've noticed some fixed point wireless companies are over-reporting and Elon Musk really over-reported. He served all, all of Roscommon County with satellite. And that's just not true. So we'll challenge that, you should challenge that. There, there's some abuses. Spectrum did a great job, they only reported the houses they actually service at the levels they service. So some providers came to the table and did accurate data. Other providers are still playing the game, trying to block federal money from improving the infrastructure.
Next slide, please.
So the MIHI office is headed by Eric Frederick. Eric Frederick did Connect Michigan forever. He's a very competent individual in the telecom industry, works for the Michigan Public Service Commission. They are asking that projects be funded that have certain characteristics that they're ready to build and operate. Well, we've already done that with our ARPA funding and what we're doing in Nester. We demonstrated that, so we'll be well-positioned for Robin. It has to be long-term viable, we're a 20-year company, we're not going anywhere. And that it's scalable, the FCC has already qualified us under Ardo for that and we can reach the 100 symmetrical. And so we do 100 symmetrical as our entry level program and go all the way up to one gig. So Roscommon County as a county with no app, no money allocation is well-positioned for us to do a Robin application. We are going to partner with PFN, they're desperate to get into Roscommon City of for the 911 here. And so they're going to partner with us to add getting middle mile to the city of Roscommon. And we'll, we'll go after it now. And our emphasis is going to be on school age households and those households that are economically at risk and those that are eligible for ACP. That's our focus in the application. Well, that's, that's kind of a recap of where we're at and what we've done. I think I, we're very happy with Roscommon County and the people. Any questions?
You have anything in regards to that?
No.
Mid Forest Lodge is in your particular area, I think, isn't it? No, to Mark's particular area.
And it's ACP. We did a business case on MFL, MFL to do it. Board agreed to a $1,200 install per household. As we became eligible for ACP and got some federal assistance on the subscription, we ran into difficulty in Nester that we couldn't get access to the properties. And so we looked at the population of Nester excluding MFL and it's 60 to 70% eligible for ACP. So in order to help those who are on age today, we waived the $700 to help them get on fiber so that they can hopefully participate. There was a little bit of ruffles with the folks of MFL. We did pass on discounts to a couple of MFL residents who were disabled vets. We waived the installation for them when we did MFL.
None of, none of Nester had the internet.
They have really nothing there, they're on satellite, which is basically nothing.
So that lower, that lower cost would be for Bacchus and Southern Richfield also, right?
Well, more than likely extended as we go up there.
Okay.
Makes sense to do it back, but Richfield, we haven't studied their ACP eligibility yet. But Bacchus clearly has a strong ACP population. Those that have, that aren't ACP eligible have been willing to pay the 1,200. I mean, we had one customer pay us 38,000, but he has a fairly large piece of property and we wired the whole property with fiber, so. There, you know, so there, there are exceptions to that, but our, our goal in lowering that is for those homes that are ACP eligible.
I know that Ardo, Ardo area was identified by the federal government.
Yep.
And then I, when talking to you, you were also saying that you, there was an Ardo area which was a Sabal in North Richfield. Are you still looking at, I know that was another company. Are you still looking, you said something about taking that over, is anything, has anything happened there?
Yeah, Mercury Broadband just got allocated to Ardo. And then they received 230 million in matching private equity funding to go along with 135 million from the, from the feds. They're across six or seven states.
Yeah.
Just.
They're out of Florida, aren't they?
Something like that. And we are talking with them to see what areas, actually, there's two, two Ardo recipients who are having difficulty in Michigan. Michigan has some very unique telecom challenges and they've approached us to help them navigate those waters a bit. Our goal is, I mean, we'll take them over if they so wish, but our goal is that anybody that receives money will help succeed in Michigan because it's good for Michigan and it's good for us. I mean, in the long run, we'll, we'll benefit from it, it's the right thing to do.
And do you have some?
Yeah, you mentioned waiving some fees for disabled veterans. Now, did you waive the 700 and the 500?
We, we did on the two MFL, the MFL board came to us and asked for two residents there. And so we waived, I think, the entire 1,200 at the time. We weren't ACP eligible as a telecom company at the time and it just seemed the right thing to do. It was only two homes. And since the board, who's the property owner, and they asked us to do it, we, we didn't have any problem agreeing to it, but just from the source of it.
Do you think this would become a company policy then, or?
Well, we're looking at it, especially with Robin and especially with BEATs where our capital risk is reduced. We see no reason why that shouldn't benefit those most in need. Because all we're looking for is that these are very low population areas. I mean, most telecom companies go in and they have 50 to 100 households per route mile where we build that averages 16 to 18 houses a route mile. And, you know, getting on private property is a long effort to do. And so anything we can do to, you know, and people don't appreciate fiber yet. They don't really understand what that can do for them. And so there's an education that comes in, so, you know, passing on those kinds of discounts just makes our job actually a little easier. It's just I don't have, I mean, my bank alone, the money, but only at a certain level, so I got to be careful.
They want it back, huh?
Thank you for doing that, thank you for doing that for those two veterans. I'm sure that Mark appreciates that too. And, you know, just highly consider that to be a goal of your company that I think it would, you know, really looks like a big plus on your background if you're doing things like that.
And we, we, right now, we take care of each particular situation. But as a policy, we probably should discuss that this year on the management team. Oh, that's the other thing we've done, we've hired local. We have at least one individual that's from Roscommon. But no experience, young lady that kept on talking to our crews as we were constructing. We finally told her, well, stop bugging us and they'll apply for a job. And so she did, no, no experience whatsoever, tiny little thing. The guys were all upset basically that are on these crews because first day she's digging holes and running one of our plows as a training. And that's, that's the hardest thing we've got is people aren't coming back to work. We're having to train everybody and that takes a few months to get them up to, with this heavy equipment. And she's, as of last week, is my primary boring operator. I mean, she's just, she just picked up the trade beautifully. And so we got this little thing on a, on a machine that is huge.
Seen that machine?
Yeah. But she's very good at it, she just did her first 600-foot bore and we'll get her up to 1,200 feet eventually. But it was, it was good to see. And plus, we've hired three other people that aren't from Roscommon, but we brought them into the project and we're looking for four or five more people, so.
Did you by any chance get off to Bacchus Township because they had expressed an interest that they?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to get back to them in January. Got a little overwhelmed with all these new federal reports and I was having a hard time finding that 25th hour in the day, it just wasn't there. I will get with Bacchus.
Okay, all right, okay. Anybody else got anything for Tim? All right, thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Might have been a little short notice, but we moved the date on you, but that.
Short notice, it was my calendar, not, not. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Item four, Commissioner and Agent Budget and Audit Presentation, Mary Frye and Tracy Baker. Good morning. Mary, could you turn, there you go, you got the green button on, okay.
Some documentation. As directed by Mr. Schneider, as soon as we had approval for the budget, I got the budget out to Jody and also then the minutes to approve that, that were the approval of the budget. And what Tracy's passing out is again, that budget that was approved. She's also passing out one of our newsletters and a copy of both the Financial Committee Meeting Minutes and the Board Minutes for the approval of the budget. I did not realize until we got here that I was also on the schedule to present the audit. If it's all right with the commissioners, I will email that audit information over to Jody so that she can share that with you. I apologize for not knowing that was part of my presentation today. The audit, however, went very well. We did see that last year, even in the audit, we were $68,000 short. And that was including the Direct Care Worker Retention Fund that we got to the tune of $250,000. So if we hadn't gotten that grant funding, we would have been in basically the same position last year as I presented to you, I should say the year before, that I presented to you for last year. So I will get that information out to you, you can see that for yourself. But as far as our audit for this past year, obviously, it was identified that we did have some shortfalls in our financing, but through very, I'm, I'm just so impressed with Ms. Baker and the work that she did to identify where we had kind of gone off the rail and also in identifying where we could cut funding, reduce some of the cost of overhead. As you are aware, we did end up having to do some layoffs and some terminations. So we did end up doing three terminations and six layoffs. So out of our total employee base, we did end up reducing by about a little over a third. But I am so proud of the team that we have. They have all stepped up and taken on additional, our additional tasks and we are right back up and we are doing great with the people that we still have standing. So with that, we also did not cut any of our programs. So our in-home services with personal care, respite care and homemaking is still intact. We did not close any of our centers. So Roscommon, St. Helen and Hope Community are still open and still functioning at the level they were prior to the budget cuts. Most of the cuts that we took were in what I refer to as the administrative staff. So the people that actually work in the administrative office were the ones that we ended up having to let go. Again, I want to be able to reinstate their employment once we get back on our feet. You guys are going through exactly the same thing, we're just a couple of months ahead of you. So, but, you know, we have programs that we had to let go. The biggest one, in my opinion, was our resource division, which is the um, is the young woman who takes care of our hardest cases, so, um, we did have to reduce that position, but I have taken over to, um, do those particular cases, which are the hardcore cases as we refer to them. In front of you, um, you do have our budget that was approved. Um, and if you have any questions with regard to that, I brought the expert. You asked me, what do I have left in my current balance on my, on my account?
You're getting to know me pretty well.
And Ms. Tracy will be able to answer that for you. So, um, but, uh, we, yes, sir, I am getting to know you pretty well, um, so. So, um, with that, if you have any questions or if you would like Tracy to go ahead and present to you the information that you have in front of you, we would be happy to do that.
Well, I think it'd be appropriate for Tracy to run through it and give us a synopsis on it, basically, and like I say, get to the, get to that.
Thank you very much.
That cash figure that I'm always interested in.
Sure, now, are you, did you want me to go over the budget? Are we, or would you like to just go into the financial statement that we have?
I would say, I would say the financial, the one that's got, uh, October.
Through November?
No, I don't want that one, I want the full year, what's the full year, is that it? Is the full year from last year?
Well, that's. That's our current.
Right, you, you have the, oh, you don't have that, you don't have that audit of the whole year then? In other words, the, how did you finish last year on September thirtieth, do you have any kind of a fund balance?
Um, I do not have that readily available for the fund balance, I do have the fund balance available as of the end of November.
Which would be for this year, because it started October first, which that's the one that's in front of me here, I believe.
Right, on the balance sheet.
Okay, so on the four columns on it?
Nope, it's gonna be this one here.
The single one, okay, all right, that's just for one month.
This is the fund balance as of November thirtieth, so this is what we have available in our total checking and savings, we have three hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents available in cash and/or CD. So, in looking at, um, that amount of money and the monies that we are expecting to get from, um, the federal grants and the state grants through NEMSA, um, we should be able to sustain all of our expenses and our payroll, um, long enough until we start getting the millage funding in. So, and that was our goal, was that we had enough actual cash flow to be able to sustain until that came in.
Which will get you through December, and then I think that county funding comes in sometime in January, that's when, that's when you request it.
Mr. Snyder, we're actually looking at being able to sustain until the end of January, because, um, you know, we looked back at over several years and there is some variance as to when the millage funding actually comes in, and we wanted to make sure that we could cover our bills and payroll through the end of January.
And you do have a, you do have a, um, budget okayed by your board, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Rebecca.
January second, okay.
Well, that's good news.
Fantastic, great.
That's very good news.
Well, your fund balance right now was four hundred thousand.
It is.
But our burn rate, um, especially when you include three payrolls for December, you have that information right here, it was two hundred and some for December.
I'm expecting an expense for the month of December to be approximately two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars due to that extra fifty thousand dollar, um, payroll, pay period we have.
Leave you about a hundred and eighty thousand then going into the year.
Correct.
And at that rate, we actually are, we have been averaging about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a month in expenses, including payroll. So we, we really, we're, we're gonna be cutting it close, um, to, to get to that end of January, but we will, we'll be there, we'll be there, because this does not include any, um, program income that we get from, um, supporters or any type of donations that we get from the community. This is only talking about our fund balance that we have with no other monies coming in. Um, so I always like to kind of look at that worst case scenario, and then when we get blessed with that additional money, it's great.
How much do you generate, like, I know a lot of people have gone to Florida, but out of the three centers for the month of December, how much?
So, if we look at our profit and loss budget versus actual, it's the four column one. You're going to see, um, little bit, like, almost halfway down, you're gonna see total program income, don't, slash donations, and you can run through there and you can see in the two months that we are reporting the donations that we've received. So for chore, which is where we have our gentleman that goes out and shovels or does small, uh, repairs, we've received five hundred and forty-four dollars in the last two months. Our congregate meals, those who go to the centers to eat, we've received ten thousand dollars so far this year, so if you look at that and cut that in half, you could safely say approximately five thousand, I would cut it down to four, just because, as you said, you've got your snowbirds. Our in-home services are approximately two thousand dollars a month. Uh, and we could go all the way down, but I'm sure you're, yes. But that's, that's kind of our, my little, uh, dash.
So if I recall correctly, Mr. Russo, the, um, we put into the budget approximately a hundred thousand dollars for donations for the entire year. Year, that was part of our budget. Um, we, we were, um, very conscious of making sure that we were only using reoccurring funds, and Tracy actually went back approximately five years to do the research to make sure that the numbers that we were putting in there were applicable to, um, the budget, so we don't end up in this position again.
Thank you, okay, and then I see in your minutes that the, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year budget was accepted and passed on November fourth at your meeting, right?
So our financial committee, I gave you both our financial committee, um, minutes and our, um, special board meeting minutes, and then I did email to Jody the board meeting minutes for November, but they were approved in that special meeting as you're referring to there.
Okay, good, okay, so that, that gets the, that gets the motion rolling for the treasurer's office to disperse that millage money when it's called for, okay? Which Rebecca's already on top of that, so.
It's my understanding that there might be.
Rebecca, there's a little bit left over from, right?
Okay. If we can get, we would appreciate.
That's great.
Okay, so, looking at it from where I sit, it looks like you're running potentially paycheck to paycheck, which is tough.
For right now.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to be really, really careful and hope you don't get any surprises.
And we are definitely doing that, we've been doing that over the past year, I had presented last time I was here, uh, several items that we had either cut or reduced. Example of that was the insurance for our employees, we were able to reduce that cost by nearly eighty thousand dollars. So we have been looking at every opportunity to reduce costs, um, even things as simple as snow bids, you guys know how expensive snow removal can be, so, I mean, we're just trying to find everything that we can. My hope is that we will get through this fiscal year and actually be able to start building that contingency fund back up again, because as you can see, the contingency fund that was in place is gone.
Right, I agree, it's, you know, it's tough, like, everything you touch. All you gotta do is look around, you can look around all over the country, it's eight percent higher.
Absolutely.
Of that.
Well, and when our business is feeding people, everybody's aware how much more expensive things are, bread, milk, eggs, the, the basics. Um, you know, our, our, uh, budget for this year had to increase over last year for the food, because we just didn't have much choice. But our kitchens coordinator and our cooking staff have gone out of their way to make sure that they're looking at everything, we're now looking at waste on a much higher level. Um, and are starting to do things like when the bananas start to go bad, we make banana bread and sell that to the, the people that are on the congregate as a fundraiser, so as not to throw those bananas in the trash, we actually do something with them, we've done that with soup. You'll see in, in your newsletter, we have soup fundraisers, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we are not having waste in our kitchens, and anything that we can recycle and put back out as another product, we're making sure that happens too.
When you talk about snowplowing, I've got three individuals in my district that have contacted me for residential snowplowing. I've had a little difficulty finding people that have got it to do it, and then when I do find somebody, the cost is unbelievable.
We were kind of taken aback, we got one bid.
Um, I also do want to mention, you know, when we're talking about the, the meals, you know, we are, we are delivering approximately five hundred meals a day to, to the folks in Ross Common County, um, and, uh, that, that is our main focus, is to make sure that we continue to do that, um, we just did a shelf-stable meal, um, for, for the county, uh, to help in, in events where there's no power or we can't get to them, um, for their meals, so we are, we're still expanding and making sure that they're all being taken care of.
Just for an explanation, a shelf-stable meal is a meal in a bag, little brown bag that would be able to be, um, eaten without electricity or without any way a can opener or anything like that, so we actually produce two shelf-stable meals for every, um, client on our Meals on Wheels program. In the past, that had been done with a frozen meal, but you can't really heat up a frozen meal if your microwave's not working and eating a ice-cold meal when you're out of power doesn't seem very appealing to me, so we went out of our way to make sure that we had little brown bags, two to each Meals on Wheels person, that they can basically take off the shelf and eat right from there, and it's, it's a well-balanced nutrition meal.
So on your audit presentat, your audit is done?
It is.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, if you could get a copy of that, I'd be curious to look at it.
Uh, question, does, does your board have a goal set for, uh, maintaining a certain fund balance as a percentage, or?
I don't, I don't think that we actually talked about that, um, Mr. Melvin, um, it hadn't been part of it, it was getting to the point where we could show that we had sufficient income to be able to support what we were doing over this next fiscal year, with the understanding that we would build back into the contingency fund when we're able. We did just get a kind of a surprise, I announced at the last board meeting that we were working on some ARP funding. Um, we did get a twenty thousand dollar check, I was just, Tracy and I were doing the happy dance in the hallway, so, uh, that was, uh, something, but w- we will start to apply back to the contingency fund just as soon as we possibly can.
Well, it'd be good to know, you know, wha- 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 what is your goal, you know, what is a reas- wha- 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 what do normal accounting practices recommend that organizations such as yours have as, as a goal for a, a fund balance, because you're not always able to meet that. Obviously, you can't, you couldn't hardly meet anything right now, but like our board, I know the school board, the township boards, most, most boards have a, a, a recommended fund balance. To, to try and reach, you can be above it or below it, it's not a.
It's a goal.
Not a red line, it's, it's just a, it's just a target, a moving target, but something to try and shoot for, to have an idea of, so you know where you're at in the future.
My personal goal, um, when, when looking at this and looking at the, um, preparing the budget was that I don't ever want the agency to be in a position where, um, we're coming down to the last penny, um, and waiting for that millage money to come in. Um, it, so, my desire and hope is that we will be able to have, um, in reserve or contingency fund, however you want to refer to it, those funds available to cover uh, at least those six months out of the year, to, to cover the, the actual expenses for six months out of the year.
And I, and I do think that's business practice, is about six months to make sure that you have that.
It's, it's getting stretched out there now, our board policy is fifteen percent, and I would, I would stress to the new board that you look at twenty or twenty-five percent, because I'm telling you, just expenses are just going out of sight.
Absolutely.
You know, but what you're referring to, Tracy, is what I said, you're living check, check to check.
And, and we, we don't.
You don't want to do that, that's exactly right.
But if we can get through till we get the millage, which is going to be early this year, thank you very much. I, I, then we'll be back on our feet and we'll be able to continue to function, I have no intention of starting to bring back those that I laid off immediately, I want to get to the point where we can start building that contingency fund that we make sure we're not living paycheck to paycheck before we start re-adding onto the budget.
You need, you, you, I think you're working towards it, you need to get stabilized first, then you can start looking at that type of stuff, so.
Along in the, in the total cost reduction, um, of the staff that, that were either let go or, um, laid off, we saved approximately three hundred and eight thousand dollars, um, in those cuts. So, you know, we're, we really did make the hard decisions, um, in order to sustain, and I, I think if we look at last year's, especially if you look at the audit and you look at those financial statements and you think of just that three hundred and eight thousand dollar number, you'll be able to see that we should be on the upside, um, when we get to the end of this fiscal year.
Rebecca? How much does that millage generate in dollars, off the top of your head, if you know that? You don't, okay, thank you.
According to the documentation that I worked with, on Jody with, we should be looking at about one point four. Yeah, one point four nine nine six six eight is what the number is that we.
Just, just curious.
Yeah, so.
Uh, Mr. Milburn, you're the board member that sits on that committee, and you're on here a number of times in the minutes, what's your take on all this?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak, uh, I'm glad that Director Frye is here today along with Tracy, uh, thanks for being here. Uh, I've been on that board for about twenty years, and I can tell you that, uh, Director Frye has earned my trust and confidence, we're on the right track. Things have been very difficult and challenging, but I believe we're on the right track, especially when you talk about five hundred economy bills. You know, you're talking about just a huge amount of people in this county relying on services. I do believe we're on the right track, I do know we're gonna have a new board here in January with COA course, it'll be interesting to get. But you've earned my support, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and what Mark is alluding to is that we are losing three of our executive committee, so, um, our, our chairperson, our secretary and, and our, um, financial, um, are not going to be with us anymore, and then, um, um, our at-large position is also going to be gone, so we are actually losing four out of nine, so um, it will be a new board, um, and, uh, looking forward to working with them.
Does anybody have anything? Okay, anything else? Anybody else, Mark, David?
Thank you.
All right.
I would just want to, once again, say thank you very much to Jody, she has been absolutely amazing in support and, um, making sure that we had the right information, uh, and just so wonderful to work with, you guys got a heck of a lady here, watch out. No, I'm just, uh, Jody has been amazing and helpful in every way, I appreciate her. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for coming.
And, and thanks for the banana bread too, Mary, it's really good stuff.
Okay, item five, request for reallocation of ARPA funds, Economic Development Committee, and I see we've got a number of them here, and I'd like to have you all come up, but we probably gotta find some chairs. Just you two, okay, all right, okay. Catherine, how are you? Good.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you doing, Brenda?
Good. Good.
Brenda knows the drill, she's got the green light on, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, so this morning, we're coming before the Board of Commissioners for consideration on some reallocation of some ARPA funds that were previously awarded to the EDC. So, there's a couple of projects that we've identified, um, that we'd like to, um, use that funding for, um, some other opportunities down the road. One such project is the Streetscapes Project, um, the board has allocated eighty thousand dollars to the EDC for that project. We're ready to kick that project off, but given the climate of the EDC and, and the funding, um, supporting the EDC moving forward, we felt that we could better use, um, those monies for some general operating expenses of the EDC. Um, in addition to the Streetscapes Project, we also had identified, um, a Dreams for Sale Project. Um, in addition to the Streetscapes Project, we also had identified um, a Dreams for Sale project. There's been a couple of committee members working um, on that program. They feel that, um, again, lack of inventory here in Roscommon County, buildings and properties are still moving quickly, uh, that they could still pull off a Dreams for Sale event um, without the bulk of that funding being used for marketing, advertising, billboards, et cetera. So at this point, um, those two programs totaling ninety thousand dollars, we're asking the Board of Commissioners this morning to reallocate um, that funding still to the EDC um, for general operating expenses.
Okay, so we would need to do a motion next meeting to
Correct.
To uh, put that forth and vote on it, so.
That allows um, the EDC to function with the director for approximately three more years. Um, in the meantime, we'll be reevaluating how we fund the EDC should the county not be able to to refund it at some point in time.
In other words, your partnership with Michigan Works will still be there.
Exactly.
That's a, that's a, that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a good thing, so. We are requesting that those funds be reallocated.
Okay, and the amount of ninety thousand?
Yes.
Okay, could that be done in one motion? Okay, good, because I know with two different priorities, but it can be done in one motion. All right, okay. All right. Hey, Mr. Milburn, I was unable to attend that meeting last week. I was here for another meeting at the same time, so um, anything to add? You were at that meeting for a short time, I know.
There's nothing to add. Thanks for being here today, and I see the whole board's here, so. I, I sense that this will be.
Yeah, we've got some ideas um, that we're tossing around, so.
Okay, well, I'm leaving.
I know. Thank you for
Thank you.
I think
All your contributions.
The future of this, the future of this county hinges on EDC. We've got to get it moving. I would have liked to get, had a couple, I had a couple of goals in mind for EDC. We didn't get there, but that's the way it goes. Oh, government works sometimes.
Still remember, remain as a member if you choose.
Yes, we do have a couple vacant positions. Actually brought up, not at our last EDC meeting, but the meeting before that, so um, you know, we'd love to have you still stay on the EDC.
Well, I'm going to get, I'm going to get to the first of the year, and I'm going to take six months and evaluate things. I do have, I do have something in mind, but I haven't even discussed it with my wife yet, so, all right? Okay, anybody else who's got anything? Thank you very much. Hey, if everybody's fast, we will adjourn and be back here at ten o'clock. We got ten oh one, so everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Melvin, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, roll call of board members. Michelle, please.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
Muckenthaler.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Okay, item number four, approval of the agenda, please. Motion is made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Any just further discussion from any commissioner at this time in regards to the agenda? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Uh, Melvin.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Yes. Russo. Motion carried.
Okay, item five, approval of the minutes for the regular meetings, eleven nine, twenty twenty-two, and eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the minutes, regular meetings of eleven nine and eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time in regards to minutes? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Well, we're on to number six, claims and accounts. I guess you're still up.
Move to approve Class A bills in the amount of three hundred sixty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Snyder. Okay, Class A is an amount of three hundred sixty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. Any questions or concerns made, Commissioner, in regards to Class A's? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, claims and accounts, please.
To approve claims and accounts in the amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand thirty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to, okay, claims and, claims and accounts in the amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand thirty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Any questions or concerns made, Commissioner, in regards to claims and accounts? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item number seven, public comment, agenda items only. Any public comment at this time, please? Okay, none in front of me and none out there in Zoom land, okay? Item eight, Administrator Controller Report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, your lawsuit update, um, Courage versus Roscommon County Treasurer, which also has a couple other things rolled in there, Fox versus, and a few others. Um, there is on January eleventh, a scheduled for arguments of the appeal in the United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit, which is actually located in Ohio. Chill versus Roscommon County is still awaiting Supreme Court. Ostrigan versus Snyder and Roscommon County BOC, no change. Ostrigan versus Snyder at L, um, they have extended the scheduling order dates. The mediation is to be completed as of five fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Ostrigan at L versus Melvin has no change. Um, our opiate suits is still awaiting all of the things that the state does to disperse money. Um, looking at probably early twenty twenty-three for uh, the state's kit on how to request and um, access that funding. And then the Ostrigan versus Board of Canvassers, the motion to dismiss was granted by the court, has been appealed to the Supreme Court, so we are awaiting their decision on that as well. Um, quick legislative update, I say quick, there's a few things in there. Um, Senate bills five nine seven and five nine eight, which were the shirky bills in regards to mental health, um, were actually rejected.
Right.
Two are out. There are some um, other movements of trying to tack a few things on at the last minute um, in their very last session to some other bills, but we're not sure that's going to see any traction. There is no movement on any of the bills in regards to changes to Freedom of Information Act or the Open Meetings Act bills. Um, nor do they believe that you will see anything at the end of twenty twenty-two. There is movement on veterans' tax exemption bills. Um, they are moving forward. I kind of volun- hold. Um, Joe from Wexford County, who serves as the administrator slash director of equalization over there, um, he actually has been utilizing BSNA and working with BSNA to provide the actual data facts for um, northern Michigan counties in regards to how much that exemption will be um, and how that process could be claimed to, to give those final figures for approval. Very interesting today, and this was one that kind of, I don't want to say it snuck in, but it came up at the end. Um, there are two Senate bills, one two 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 and one two two three, that are actually um, have come through the Senate and are up for vote in the House today. Um, if the bill actually passes without any amendments, it will automatically go to our governor. If she signs it, there would be an increase of forty-eight percent in liquor tax funding per county. For Roscommon County, that's an additional seventy-two thousand eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. Um, it would be slightly more flexible. Right now, fifty percent goes to um, the substance abuse. So we allocate that to mental health. Um, and the other half of that is retained into the general fund. Um, with that, we, with this new bill, if it goes through, we would have to allocate at least forty percent for um, substance abuse and no less than what we spent in twenty twenty-two, which would go directly to the mental health services. Um, day-to-day activities, obviously, we have the hearing tomorrow afternoon on um, the Holton Lake Special Assessment for those parcels that had not been noticed and not included um, in the first go-round. Um, found some interesting news. You'll get a little bit more information on this, but we are looking at let me think of the best way to put this. So there will be no going back at this point in time, probably based on um, where you are at with the Holton Lake lake level studies. Um, the question will be how you want to proceed with the lake level studies. Um, the Eagle has essentially um, communicated to the attorneys and to Spicer Group that now that the door is open, um, and the lake level obviously has been higher than it's set, that they will not permit for something that just fixes what we currently have. Um, I will tell you that we are probably looking just at the lake level study of upwards of one point five million dollars. So that will be something that we'll end up probably having to look at funding for, depending on um, the status of some of the other. I have been working with the uh, Sheriff's Department on finalizing some of their grant reimbursements for twenty twenty-two. Um, as you all are aware, prosecutor was successful in her bid for uh, District Court Judge, and she will be retiring um, in ten days. Um, that being said, uh, Judge Bennett has made a offer of appointment to a attorney, Michael T. Edwards. Um, at this point, I do believe he is accepting, but I haven't heard that final answer yet. So they will be moving forward on that. Um, we did have the Northern Michigan Commissioners Association meeting here. Um, pretty interesting, best part about it was um, our Becky Younger presented on the Children's Assessment Center. Um, it was very interesting to, you know, it's the stats that we all listen to, but it was interesting to watch commissioners from other counties that either weren't aware of the needs or the existence of these types of services um, or were aware but didn't realize that it was something that they could actively um, participate in, in having happen, so she did a great job. We are on stage three of a four-stage of the rollout of all of our new account updates. You remember, like, three years ago, the State of Michigan um, updated the chart of accounts that we must use. I have been working with BSNA, who is our software provider, to finalize that um, through different processes of changing accounts, making new funds, so those are ready for final review for me. And I have a bunch of stuff that I have to get back to them um, in the next week so that we will be rolling out those new accounts with our new budget in January. So lots of us, I will have lots of new numbers to learn. Um, I did get to go to about forty-five minutes worth of the EDC meeting the other day, which was very great. Nice to hear that they are uh, committed to staying together and have a, you know, plan of action for funding to move forward. I attended Monday the uh, countywide Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Meeting that we have been having. Um, several interesting things coming out of that. We are currently working on a step-by-step review of the Enabling Act, which is being redrawn and redrafted by all the counties involved. Um, Commissioner Snyder has been attending, so in January, I'll have to start bringing a new commissioner with me. Two, two super important things came out of that meeting. The first is the decision that when this new Enabling Act is redrawn, each county will then reappoint board members. Um, that would be an April first appointment for that. So there is an opportunity for counties to start fresh with members and representatives that may be more inclined to let go of old ways of doing things and move forward with new positive ways of doing things. The second thing that is important is, um, as you are aware, they do not currently have an executive director. Their executive director is on loan from um, the Northern Michigan Regional Entity. And he is kind of working on cleaning things up and moving things out, but they had posted for an executive director position. Um, now, the mental health was looking at starting interviews in the next um, week or two. The request of the counties was sent out that until this Enabling Act is redrawn and solidified, that they hold on any interviewings, that they extend, um, send their timeline essentially in order to give whomever is interviewing a chance to see what they, what they're being asked to do versus bringing someone in. Um, part of the new Enabling Act is asking that each board um, bless the appointment as well so that there is some say by all six counties in who runs that facility. The final portion is Roscommon County, we're, we're going to be last on the list, um, but we need to schedule what, what we're calling a listening session. So essentially what that will be is inviting stakeholders to come and talk to representatives of Roscommon County in regards to mental health needs in our communities. Um, because we have three new board members, Chairman Snyder and I had decided that this would be something that we would hold off until January so that we can have enough members present. Um, so this won't be some formal, it's going to be kind of a fireside chat type of type of schedule, best, best guess will be, it will be something we would want to schedule um, in the evening so that those that attend after work, um, you'd be looking at consumers, families of consumers, um, and those entities that interact with. We also um, have successfully filed our county incentive plan information, which is where we give all the data's budget outcomes, um, anticipated budget outcomes, and they say, good job. We put everything on the website, and then they send us our revenue sharing next year. So that has been successfully completed. Um, nine one one director Stringham has informed me that the new tower purchase is completed. We do have three new, and I'm calling these abandoned instead of unclaimed bodies. Um, the new trend seems to be that your mom dies and you didn't like your mom, so you just don't go pick up the body anymore. Um, where we sit with those is I, I don't even know. They are hanging out in your vault. Um, it's just, you know, you're looking at twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars that we're allocating a year towards unclaimed bodies, not even abandoned bodies. So it's something that I'm hoping to work on, um, maybe getting an offset of some sort of a group together to assist with cremains and burials from that, um, so that we can offset some of those expenses um, and, and just give a little bit, a little bit better treatment to people, so. Um, the NMCAC um, has been approached and has been discussing the potential of taking on the juvenile detention building. Their board, full board met, and then their executive board meets this week in regards to whether or not um, they can expand and afford to expand into that area. They have had several questions. Bill's out there. Bill has been um, gracious and wonderful in getting information and providing it. Some of their biggest concerns were roofing. They were curious about asbestos, asbestos abatement. Um, and just a couple smaller concerns that I believe we have um, been able to provide to them, a copy of the actual deed, those types of things. So we should hear something um, finalized by that, by your last meeting of this year.
Okay, so Bill, Bill, you've been involved with that as far as communicating with them? Good, thank you.
Noel, Julie, and I um, have communicated and instituted all of the changes um, that were a result of the budgetary cuts made for twenty twenty-three. Um, bad news, good news has all been communicated, and plans are in place. Uh, December fifteenth, um, next week, there is a five-county meeting regarding the Juvenile Detention Center, i.e. a five-county juvenile detention center. This is Clear, Gladwin, Ogama, Roscommon, and Wexford. Uh, Commissioner Milburn will be attending with me. We're headed down to Gladwin. Um, I'm getting a representative from our juvenile courts and myself, and we will be going down for that. Um, the very last thing, which is my favorite thing, is a couple months ago, September, dueling, we had a gentleman call, and he said, I have a tree in my yard that would be a perfect Christmas tree for the county. Um, and me being me and all the things that I do, I thought, what a great idea to have a Christmas tree. So then I went down the hallway and I talked to uh, Keith from Veterans Affairs and said, hey, let's do a first-ever Veterans honorary tree. So then I went down the hallway and I talked to Keith from Veterans Affairs and said, hey, let's do a first ever Veterans honorary tree. For Rass Common County. So as you walked in your employee entrance this morning, you probably noticed there is a tree up in the front. So Thursday, December eighth at one P M will be the decorating of our first ever veterans. Veterans Memorial Tree. We're hoping to be able to make this an annual event in Rass Common County. Ideally, I think that maybe if we can coordinate with Christmas in the village, that would be a good, a good thing too. But one, one day at a time. The very last, last thing that I have for you is. A request for consideration. I received a call from a concerned citizen last. And the citizen was worried because the food pantry, Rass Common County Food Pantry is running out of food. They do not have enough food. She said she thought donations were down. She wasn't sure exactly what was going on. So I called Chris, who is the director that took over for Linda after she passed. And he said, it's not so much that he doesn't have enough food. They have the same amount of food that they have had. Their needs have more than doubled. The stats that he gave me for October and November were. I remember October's off the top of my head. Last year, he had about two hundred and fifty-seven individuals that they serviced. This year, there was four hundred and fifty-three. And November had the same trend. So it has just skyrocketed. That being said, we don't have a lot of money left in the American Rescue Plan Act funds. But we do have twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents available and unallocated. If the board wanted to, my thought was that you could allocate five thousand dollars to a food truck. Or food purchasing for the Rass Common County Food Pantry. They have not asked. But I wanted to bring that to your attention because it is Christmas time. That's it.
Hey, any question in regards to Jody's report? Well, I think, I, I think what will be appropriate is if you take the lead on it. And you brought it up. Because I think it's based in Holton Lake anyway, am I correct? Right. Could you? Could you possibly bring Chris in here at our next work session so that we can get it addressed in front of ourselves publicly? And then I think we could probably because of the nature of it, act on it that particular day with a motion. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I don't. You know, I, I know what Jody's bringing up. I just think that we need to have some dual, some diligence done and check this thing out. The AR, the ARP money is money that was designated for things like that to go for the whole county. So I mean, I, I think it's appropriate. But let's just make sure that we got all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. If you take the chair of that, please. All right, good. All right. Regards to mental health. You got that letter in front of you. It's from, it's from the six chairmans of the six, of the six counties and it's signed by us. And this is something that, this particular board, these chairs that are meeting, we haven't, the chairs have not done that until the last six months. It wasn't until there was a problem at mental health that it, that it come up. So I've been involved. I would recommend that. For the next board, you can act on how you want, but I would put one commissioner on there and probably the chairman, whoever you guys deem as your chairman. Sit on this board as they get this memo of understanding updated, so the enabling agreement updated. You're going to have to re, reappoint your people or get new people on the other board. This is the ones that Angie McGillis sits on and Al Cambridge sets on. And some of the counties have a, have a board member that's sat on that committee. So it's kind of a subcommittee. And a little, I feel that board is a little dysfunctional. Sixteen-person board, and I, I just think that it needs some commissioners on that also, but that chairman could be one in the same. So, but there's a lot of things. Mental health is too screwed up in this state. I'm telling you big time.
So Chairman, what they are asking for and going to put into the Enabling Act is that each county will. Have a commissioner and a consumer as an employee on that.
So I, unfortunately, I could not attend this last meeting on Monday. Jody was there in my, in my place. But then we've been going together along with the undersheriff. Express our concerns. I was at a funeral, so I couldn't make it, but I did express it to my meeting before the. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't even want to consider being the CEO until the enabling agreement had been hammered out. So. And I did get some support from the chairman of the Leonel County in that regard. So I guess this letter was kind of. Brought about by my couple of statements that I had made, so, which is good. All right.
Question on that. Jody, you, you, you talked a little bit about. They wanted to have a say-so in the director, the appointment of the director. Is Grand Traverse County pushing for an individual county veto so that any of the six counties? Could veto the selection of the director and they couldn't be?
No, it would be a majority, as long as there's a majority.
As long as there's a majority.
Majority, yep. There's a majority. At this point, they're meeting once a month. I would hope that someday they get to the point and get things straightened out that they don't have to be. Yes, Rebecca, something in regards to that? On the what? Oh, okay. All right. So anyway. The good thing is, is that the six chairman, we're meeting. Every month, which I think is a good thing, and I think they need to continue doing that. So that would be something I would get. A commissioner appointed to that next year, okay? All right. What did you have in regards to? Blight elimination, okay?
Yesterday, I talked to the person that's heading this up in the Michigan Land Bank. And we set up a meeting and it'll be on teams. And it will be on the nineteenth at two thirty. And it gives the townships an opportunity to ask questions about the blight elimination grant. I sent a letter to all the townships about a week and a half ago. And gave them a deadline of December seventh to send me a list of the blight projects. The only one I've gotten back so far is from Richfield Township. But I do know that other townships are having meetings and they're going to discuss this, so I will send out an email to all them about this meeting. On the nineteenth at two thirty. And at that point, he will explain. The process and the paperwork that the townships would have to have. Each property owner that owns the property has the blade on it to fill out. And there's a lien. If it's not owned by the township or by the county, there will be a lien placed on it. So if the property sells, the land bank will get that money back. But I do know Richfield, like I said, has turned theirs in and. When I go and I do my foreclosure process, I see a lot of these blight properties, a lot of trailers that are falling in. Rass Common Township has the same issue. A lot of old trailers, a lot of old cabins that are literally imploding. You know, from decay. So I just wanted to let you know that we are working towards this. January thirty-first is the final day to get all the paperwork in. So we'll start this meeting on the nineteenth and then I'll connect with. The townships and the Brownfield. Group is actually helping me out with this. And so I'm going to give you an update on what was going on. Two hundred thousand is the first round and then the second round, we may get more money. So that's quite a bit to take care of some of these trailers and cabins and things. If you have any questions, you can join in on the meeting. Are we able to have this room, Michelle, if you could look? On the nineteen. Okay, then I'm just saying, could you look and see if we're able to? And if not, maybe one-on-one has. Thank you.
All right. Anything else in regards to Administrator Controller Report? Any commissioner at this time? Okay, correspondence. A is a delegated authority of Holton Lake Lake Level Hearing Notice, which is tomorrow at two o'clock. District Court. B is a resignation letter from the Drain Commissioner, effect of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. C is a Michigan Association of Counties Legislative Update. D is a Michigan Associated Counties Grant Funding Alert. And E is Eaton County Resolution in regards to Michigan Auto Insurance Reform. Any questions in regards to correspondence at this time for any commissioner? Okay, monthly department reports. I don't have any in front of me, so. Any visitors that'd like to be recognized at this time, please? Item twelve, unfinished business or new business. American Rescue Plan Funding Update. Jody's kind of give us a little bit of that. You got a little bit more?
Not a heck of a lot more. The funding that has not been dispersed yet, but is accounted for. Is the Children's Assessment Center, which they will be looking at reimbursing them. Basically, the VOKA money that they received through the state from the federal government has been cut by over twenty percent. So they will be utilizing that money to continue services in Rass Common County. And for operational needs, and that is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and two dollars that has not been dispersed yet. We also have an additional twenty thousand that will be dispersed January of twenty twenty-three and January of twenty twenty-four. For sting, for additional resources within Rass Common County in that area. The very last portion of that sits with the ten thousand four. That will be now allocated to continue housing through the end of March, so we can follow that up, get that organized. Make sure that we know where all the, the money and the loans are and turn that over to the Treasurer's Office for collections. So basically, we are sitting at a cash balance of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty cents. With. Twenty thousand eight ninety-seven eighty unaccounted for, for the end. Everybody has been turning in quarterly reports. And a completely fine, don't have to prod the manor. We have had a lot of success with the United Way applications for assistance for. Housing rental has, that you approved the addition on. They've seen an increase in applications for that. As well as now that it is getting older assistance for purchase of propane. Has come through as well. And these are, of course, all people that are not eligible for other programs. The Alice, the working poor, people that are working forty hours a week or two or three jobs, but just can't keep up sometimes. And as, as you know, Christmas time, this time of year is the worst time for most people financially. So it's, it's nice that they've been able to retain those funds for that. Eventually, in the spring, some of you won't be here, so I'm sorry, because I'm sure it'll be cute. I want to work with Sundrop Montessori Preschool. They would like to come in on a field trip. And give a kind of a thank you and an oversight of, truly, I'm going to come back to those two preschoolers. Of the things that have been done with their program. That can only thrive and survive because of the funding that was allocated to them.
A lot of that initial four point seven million dollars of APR money, we dispersed everything out of the account up to three hundred and whatever you said, three hundred and some thousand.
Yep.
And out of that, there's only twenty thousand dollars left over, which we're looking at five thousand for the food bank possibly.
If you so decide.
Right, so that's, we dispersed, we did our jobs as far as the county, we got the money out there to help the county. And I'm, I'm thinking we did a committee and everybody here needs to be commended.
And we do not have the, the reporting. It was initially, it was supposed to be every six months that we would be recording, reporting to the federal government. But when the final rules came out, anybody that received less than, I'd say it was like five point two million dollars. Goes to annual reporting. So.
Okay. Uh, any questions in regards to American, American Rescue Plan Funding? Mr. Milburn.
Appreciate your humble comment, Mr. Chairman, but quite honestly, it was your leadership and the expertise of the board that you formed. Has spent that arc of money wisely. Thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome. Any other new or old business? Yes, sir.
I, I wrote, I sent an email to the Board of Commissioners, too late to be included in the correspondence for this month. Or for this meeting, it'll be for the next meeting. I may not be able to attend the next meeting, so I would entertain any questions or if you haven't had time to read it, I can read it now.
I would have you read it since you orchestrated it.
Here's the correspondence I sent to the county board in an email. It appears there is a radical change in the operation of the Higgins Lake Control Structure. The last fourteen years, the gates are opened or left open after ice forms on the surface of the lake. While evaporation, when evaporation is eliminated as a major source of water loss. The lake level starts rising and in the past fourteen years, the level continued to rise with all the gates wide open. To nearly summer level at ice out this last winter. If the gates are intentionally left closed all winter, there is a potential to exceed the summer level. I would recommend at this time, actions be taken to initiate the past procedures. Of the last fourteen years to prevent the board or individual acting outside their governmental immunity. From being responsible for damages resulting from the intentional failure to operate the lake level control structure in accordance to the current court order.
Oh, in a nutshell, what are you asking for?
Basically, talk to Charlie and have him do what he's done for the last two years.
So Charlie no longer works for us because he was the maintenance person that was laid off, so he should probably talk to Bill.
Okay, and I know at this point, myself and Commissioner Russo sit on that, sit on Higgins Lake. At this point, I'm going to tell you my frustration. Probably make a statement, probably get crucified for it, but that's okay. In fourteen years I've been here, I've been. Gotten to the point that I've probably heard about Higgins Lake. Water level about once too many times, but at this point, I would, you know, I tell you what, for going forward. With what goes on with this thing, it's whether you're a low-water person or you're a high-water person. And if nobody's going to compromise, which is a problem. I would advocate for this next board that you take the responsibility for all three lakes and give them to the Drain Commissioner, which is an elected official. Who would be voted on by one, by, by the people of the county. And that would be that one person's. Responsibility is to take care of not only Higgins Lake, Holton Lake and Lake St. Helen. You know, I mean, it's ridiculous the amount of time that gets spent on chasing after water levels. Being in court over things you can't even control because Mother Nature isn't even involved in it. It's just, it's just crazy. I'm sorry if I sound a little frustrated, it's because I am. But I would, going forward for this county, for this county, county government entity, I would advocate that you, that. All the lakes be put under the Drain Commissioner, which is an elected position. It's funded by the whole county, so it should be an elected position. That's where I stand on it. As far as doing anything, as far as now Ken, as far as opening the thing, we're already two inches under. The winter level, so I would say just leave it the way it is. Mr. Russo.
Well, right now, being last year, where were you, Ken, this time? You recall the last fourteen. You recall the last fourteen.
Well, I'll take. Adjustments were mitigated, yes. They were taking care of the rest of the winter. No, the, the gates weren't either open nor closed, they were placed at about.
The, the gates were adjusted to about one inch over winter level. So that when everything froze up, you, you didn't, you didn't have the gates freeze up. If the gates freeze up in, in the closed position.
Right now, we're eight inches under summer level, am I correct?
Right, so, so you would not, you would not drain any more water right now. You would adjust the gates to a position where if it went above the winter level by one inch, water would go over the top of the gates. The way it is right now, the gates are completely shut. So the, the water is just going to continue to rise until it is above summer level.
It's not rising, that's the problem, and it's closed.
And as I pointed out, it won't until the ice forms. Right now, there is still tremendous evaporation, because the water is warmer than the cold air, just like everything else. Right, it, it's, it won't occur until the ice forms.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
And I agree with you, Bob, in your statement, a hundred percent.
So, all right. Item, any other unfinished or new business? Okay, item thirteen, motions and resolutions, please.
Move to set the two thousand twenty-three Roscommon County Board of Commissioners' organizational meeting on January third, two thousand twenty-three, at nine o'clock AM.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to set the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners' Organization Meeting at Tuesday, January third, two thousand twenty-three, at nine o'clock. Any further discussion, any commissioner? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Alvin.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion two, please.
Set the two thousand twenty-three holiday closure dates. New Year's Day observed Monday, January second, two thousand twenty-three. Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. President's Day, Monday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Good Friday, Friday, April seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Memorial Day observed Monday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Juneteenth, Monday, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Independence Day, Tuesday, July fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Labor Day, Monday, September fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Veterans Day, Friday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Thanksgiving Holiday, Thursday, Friday, November twenty-third, twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Christmas Eve, Friday, December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Christmas Day, Monday, December twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. New Year's Eve, Friday, December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Please note, if a two thousand twenty-three holiday falls on the weekend and the time off for that holiday falls, this does not make sense, falls in two thousand twenty-four, that holiday time off will be approved. Sorry, that statement does not really make any sense. That is directly from scale. If the holiday falls on a weekend, then it is observed. If it's on Saturday, it falls on, it is observed on Friday. If it falls on Sunday, it's observed on Sunday. But the two thousand twenty-four, so for New Year's Day in two thousand twenty-four, you'll, the board will approve that when they approve two thousand twenty-four holidays. That wasn't part of the motion, that's just clarification. One more clarification. The new board will have to decide whether or not Juneteenth is actually a paid holiday closure or not, so.
Right, that's up to the new board, we're just setting the date. A question in regards to the scheduling with the courts at the end of the year, was that, did that get?
These are the dates from the courts.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, because I know we've run into a problem. We've run into a problem before, because we never discussed that, okayed it before that.
Yes, and that was, that was where we had to come up with the, get some clarification, because the initial list didn't include for New Year's Eve or New Year's Day. So there was further research into that. And so, so New Year's Eve, since it is actually on Sunday, they're observing it on that Friday. The courts are observing it on Friday.
Got you, okay, just wanted to make sure. I know we had a problem a couple of years back, okay? All right, any other questions in regards to holiday closures for two thousand twenty-three? Okay, roll call.
Need a motion.
Excuse me, motion, thank you.
I'll make that, go ahead. Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to set the two thousand twenty-three holiday closure dates. Any further discussion, any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion three, please.
Move to set the two thousand twenty-three Roscommon County Airport Advisory Committee Meeting Location Dates and Times as follows. January fifth, two thousand twenty-three, March second, two thousand twenty-three, May fourth, two thousand twenty-three, July sixth, two thousand twenty-three, September seventh, two thousand twenty-three, November second, two thousand twenty-three. All meetings will be held at the airport passenger terminal two eighteen East Holton Lake Drive. At ten o'clock AM, questions should be directed to Eric Jeroz, Airport Manager, nine eight nine three six six seven six six zero, or nine eight nine three nine zero two three nine eight, or email at eric.jeroz@gmail.com.
Okay, motion was, motion was made by Commissioner Russo and seconded by whom?
I mean, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Milburn. Any further discussion in regards to Airport Advisory Committee Meetings?
Comment, that's usually, this could be, that'll be a Thursday after the Veterans Coffee Hour. Thank you, Chair.
All right, roll call.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion four, please.
To reallocate ten thousand five hundred dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funding previously designated for consulting offset expenses related with closing the Housing Commission Department. The Housing Commission slash Department funding will allow for Director to continue in position through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion was made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Snyder to reallocate ten thousand five hundred dollars of the American Rescue Plan funding to the housing, related to the closing of the Housing Commission Department. Effect of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Any discussion by any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion five.
Move to recognize Becky Yunker and Jojean Thompson as Roscommon County two thousand twenty-two co-persons of the year.
So moved.
Second.
This was made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Mr. Milburn to make, to recognize Becky Yunker and Jojean Thompson as the Roscommon County two thousand twenty-two co-persons of the year. Excellent choices, which is one of the reasons why I felt strongly we should have two this year. Okay, any further comments, any commissioner? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Okay, committee reports.
I could go. I had the agenda. Excuse me, sciences and claims and accounts.
All I had was claims and accounts.
I had the Veterans Affairs Committee meeting. We assisted three veterans with transportation and medical appointments last month. We assisted financially with three burials, replacement of one grave marker. We assisted another veteran with food and another vet, a homeless veteran and his family with one week's lodging at the Stripes Motor Lodge. We had a hundred and fifty dollar donation from the American Legion Post four sixteen, is that the whole point?
Four sixteen, that's St. Helen, I believe, isn't it?
Forty-five only, yes.
St. Helen.
I probably won't be at the next meeting, I'd just like to show my appreciation to everybody in Roscommon County for everything they've done for me, the time that I've lived here, and to this board, Tim, Bob, David, Mark. Thank you for serving with me, it's been an honor. I started with the county in nineteen eighty-one for twenty-five years as a maintenance person, and then fourteen years as a commissioner. So I'm happy with the service I've provided. Thank you, Jody, Michelle, believe. And, you know, even Herb. Herb, Herb was essential when I first started, having no experience with Higgins Lake Level. I called on him often, relied on him for his advice and, and his long experience. It was very helpful, kept my feet under me until I could have enough experience that I didn't have to go to him all the time.
It's my pleasure to help.
Okay, Mr. Milburn.
A, A D C, N M C A A. Pseudo for next meeting, gentlemen. Dave and I are taking everybody out to lunch, I think we're going to either do it here or, we haven't decided yet. Subs or pizza, whatever, whatever date comes up. I'm hungry, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Hey, I had a pretty light one the last two weeks, but I did have Northern Michigan Commissioners' Meeting this past, last Thursday. That, of all the meetings and organizations that I go to, was my absolute favorite committee. I will miss that one. So, but it was a good turnout, but I would reiterate what Jody said about Becky Yunker. Becky Yunker put on a presentation that, I tell you what, everybody paid attention. It was fantastic. I, and like I told the board, and I says, you know, without Becky, that Children's Assessment Center doesn't, doesn't exist. Also had the agenda meeting that particular morning too, so that's all I've had for committee reports, okay? All right, item fifteen, public comment at this time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Uh, this is yesterday, Higgins Lake. And I'm glad Ken brought up a lot of stuff, and you two have, Bob, also I'm going to address a lot of those issues. Higgins Lake is seven point nine two inches below summer level or one point nine two inches below winter maximum drawdown. Yes, day before yesterday, it was two point one six inches below. Holton is one point six eight inches below summer level, uh, four point three two inches above winter maximum drawdown. Lake St. Helen, four point zero eight inches below summer level, one point nine two inches above maximum winter drawdown. All the gates on Higgins are closed, they're usually open this time of year, as Ken had mentioned. All the gates on Holton and Lake St. Helens are open, and they are well above the maximum winter drawdown. Higgins is being drawn down to a very low level because of the uncontrolled four point seven five foot spill, spillway, and the management of Higgins is illegally maintained at this time and has been for years. When I take over in January, as I expect, I'll be stepping into a mess. To be perfectly clear, okay, the courts are in charge of the lake levels, not the DNR, not Eagle, especially since the reason for a winter drawdown is to prevent ice damage, and it is optional. There's no logical, ecological, or any other reason Higgins has to remain two inches below the maximum winter drawdown. In fact, the DNR back in nineteen eighty-two, when the winter drawdown was ordered, in their position statement, said that an environmental impact study is usually done, but they had no objection to allowing us to have one. The winter drawdown is an option, not mandatory. However, the summer level is not. The problem with the current state of affairs, where the water level is at Higgins, impacts the summer level. The water table does not have an opportunity to recharge, and we never reach the legal level, and we'll never reach the legal level next summer. We have it for almost three years. It's the legal responsibility of this board, and Chairman Snyder is in charge of the dam on the legal levels. Here's what I suggest. I visited the dam yesterday and noticed that there is about a twelve to eighteen inches of water flowing through the uncontrolled four point seven five foot spillway. If it stays that way next spring, there won't be enough water flowing down the cut to help fish spotting, et cetera. Now is the time to get the water levels higher before it's too late. We need to partially block off the opening to the Cut River. As I mentioned, doing so at this time of year will not harm the water flow going down the cut, and it will in fact help next spring. If it is this commission's responsibility to do something, installing a board across the four point seven five foot spillway to partially hold back a little water that, so it can be released in the spring, will help. Doing so will not violate the court order, and in fact, it will help you come into compliance with the court order. I ask that you, Chairman Snyder, authorize someone to immediately install a board to do something to hold back some of the water on Higgins. Our watershed needs to be recharged so it can get closer to the legal level next summer. In other words, it needs to be managed properly. I will install a board if you authorize me to do so, that is within your power. With regards to pushing off the responsibilities of maintaining the legal levels, I would, to the Drain Commission, I'm going to oppose such a proposal. The problem with the frustration of maintaining the levels on Higgins Lake is that this administration did not do its job, as the Court of Appeals ruled. This frustration is of your own making. If this commission would have requested Eagle for a modification to the LLCs as statutorily required, you would have been off the hook. We wouldn't have sued you, we would have sued Eagle, okay? The problem would then have been shifted to them. You chose not to do that, and that was the problem. Now, on your way out, you want to eliminate this responsibility and give it to the Drain Commission. One last ditch effort to oppose the will of the people. I was elected because of this problem, I believe. I will oppose such action with everything in my being. I see what's going on. Now, I will be taking over as commissioner and in charge of maintaining the legal levels, which I will do much better. And if you want to remove me from doing so, I'm not going to forget it. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Very comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I just wanted to let you know that the Clerk's Office and Registered Deeds Office, the phones are now live again. So we did, did have it on a messaging system before, because we were very short staffed, so I am full staff again. I actually have Jeanette Kissel in my, in the audience now, she's training to clerk meetings. And, and then I also have another Heather, so I have two Heathers. You can walk in and say Heather, and there's two of them in my office. But both Jeanette and Heather are doing quite well and picking up very quickly. And so we hope to have the appointment requirement removed by the beginning of the year as well. So right now, we're still currently closing for lunch from eleven thirty to twelve thirty, just because we don't want to have anybody overwhelmed at lunch. And, but we're, we're getting there, so thanks for everybody's support during the transition.
Okay, any other public comment at this time? Hey, item number sixteen.
Mr. Chair.
Hi.